I'm calling to order the August 19th meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely consistent with Chapters 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the physical requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can participate. The public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely, dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the town clerk signed up for public comment. Ginger?
Hi. I just wanted to come and speak with you. I had given Sharon the warrant for the state primary election to be signed so we can get that posted. That is December 3rd from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We also have the early voting starting on this Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00. And then all next week during our normal business hours, it will be here on the second floor in the planning boardroom.
Need us to sign this now?
If you can tonight so that way I can get it posted tomorrow. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to remind the general public those two items in case anyone's waiting for that?
Of the Wallace Ave?
5C and 5D.
Oh, yes. I would like to make a note that the applicant has withdrew their license request for number 5C and D, Fiesta Shows Outdoor Entertainment License. So we will not, because of their request to withdraw, we will not be moving forward with those hearings. Just if anybody is in the audience for that, they will not be happening. Okay, so we'll start with community organizations. The Auburn Chamber of Commerce. Is someone here from the Chamber of Commerce? Would you like to come up and tell us what your event is?
Hi, I'm Brooke Holmgren. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator, but I work with the Chamber of Commerce. So because I'm here for another presentation tonight, I said that I would present this on their behalf. This is an open air license for the chamber to host their annual Scarecrow Your Business contest. It is an annual event that they put on at Goddard Park. I believe the locations are in the packet. And they came to a DCG meeting, and it's been discussed with the other departments, the regulatory departments. And the only main concern is that they go out with DBW to make sure that none of the stakes interfere with any underground utilities.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the fee for the open air license. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing. Is there a motion for Rocco's Common Victroler License? Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there someone from Rocco's here? Okay.
Is anyone?
Is there anyone online? Okay. Do board members have any questions on the application?
I think Jane. Jane, are you representing Rocco's?
Nope.
Okay.
Isn't Rocco's already open? Shouldn't they already have a license? Isn't it at a different location?
So this is for the Common Vic. This is so they can sell all their goods.
Okay.
But I believe they went through the licensing for the...
Okay. So this is a different license. Okay, different license. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the license?
I make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Further, failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We didn't ask for public comment.
I'm so sorry.
Make a motion, we reopen the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Are there any, anybody in the audience or on the Zoom, the meeting that would like to make a comment on the license for Rocco's? Seeing... I'm sorry, did you want to come up? Sure. Can you just give us your name and your address?
My name is Don Knight, 25 Wallace Ave.
Sure. You just have to be in one of the microphones. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
My name is Don Knight, 25 Wallace Ave. And I just wanted to know what the license is for. I was just getting laid, so I didn't hear what the subject is.
It's a Common Victroler License, just so they can sell goods in their store.
A controller license?
Victroler.
Oh, Victroler License.
That's so they can sell things in their...
I didn't think they made Victrolers any longer.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the public? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. There a motion on the license?
I make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We have a second public hearing for the ECO ATM kiosk in the Auburn Mall. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there someone here for the ECO ATM kiosk? Were board members able to review the application? And are there any questions?
Do have some questions. Reading their material, it looks like they take in photographs or scans of licenses and IDs. And my concern is, how long are they keeping this? You know, where is this going to be placed? We have these maps that basically show nothing, which we are supposed to have a map that actually shows what they're trying to do. So it'd be nice if they were here so they could explain where they're putting it. Is it in Macy's? Is it somewhere else? You know, what are they, you know, how are they securing this? You know, what is the privacy of the person going here? You know, you've got a kiosk in the middle of a store or the mall. There's really no privacy, and yet you're really providing your license. You're providing a lot of information. I've never heard of this company before. They seem to have a lot of information. But, you know, our rules do say they're supposed to be here, so...
Yeah, I understand. Did we want to collect some questions that we could ask them to come next time? Are there any members in the public that would have questions about this? Please feel free to come up. I just need your name and address. Sure, I'm sorry. Yep. Sure.
Dave McCray, former Av, Auburn. I had basically the same questions that the gentleman just said. There isn't much information here. So I was wondering if this is like a temporary thing or a permanent thing or whereabouts it's going to be. Like you said, the map, sorry. The map doesn't show essentially where it's going to be in the mall area. So I had the same questions, so hoping to hear something.
Thank you for those. We can certainly get back to the company, ask them to come next time.
Frank Page, Precinct One. The only thing I have to say is when you guys are voting on these things, you have no one here to respond. So why are you voting in favor of things when there's nobody here? I remember a time when I used to come up here that if the occupant wasn't here, you held it over until the next meeting. I don't understand why you're just letting it float right through. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has comments? That's who. Yep, can you just talk into the microphone?
Sure. Did you hear me on that, there's? Would you like me to repeat?
Put it down.
Yeah, can you just move it down closer? Thank you.
I'm Nancy Mongola, Nine Kennen Terrace. I'm in a butter of, I got this notice about a secondhand junk license, and I had no idea what that meant. So I'm just seeking information about that and how potentially it could affect. Like, it looked like secondhand junk license. Was it a flea market? Like, I didn't know what it was, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, the applicants are required to attend. I don't know why they aren't present tonight. I would suggest to the board that they hold this matter over until its next meeting. We can notify the applicant that because they were not in attendance, that this matter would be carried over to the next meeting.
Certainly. Are we in agreement with that? Can we close the meeting?
Can't close the meeting.
Continue the meeting till the next?
We can if we can include those and ask them for more information as to where it's going to be located, you know, what kind of protections they're going to have for the public using this, how long they're going to be keeping this information. You know, that's another one. How often is it emptied? And, you know, how do they dispose of the information that they're collecting? Because you can collect it, but that doesn't mean that you're safely disposing of it. So I think that's an important aspect before we allow anybody to just willy-nilly take people's personal information.
So is there a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So this will continue till our next meeting. Moving on, our next item is departmental items. We have a revised intermunicipal agreement. Great.
Good evening. I'm Darlene Coyle, Inspection Services Director of Development and Inspeccional Services and also the Health Director. So you have an intermunicipal agreement for the Public Health Excellence and Shared Service Grant. As you may recall, back in May, a few months back, we had a copy of this agreement, and you voted to approve it. Right after that approval, we were notified through CMRPC that the state had updated the document. So they have some updates in this document. It is essentially the same, same approval that we're looking for. There has been one town, I believe Dudley, has, is not part of the IMA for the Shared Service Grant and possibly another town. But this document is gone through the state. So this is the revised document. It's actually the municipal letter of commitment. And the Board of Health just held its meeting right before this for the Select Board, and they have endorsed the grant and the municipality statement of commitment.
Do board members have any questions?
Yeah, could you tell us what towns are involved in this?
Sure, thank you. So the towns that are involved are Auburn, Brimfield, Oxford, and Webster is the host.
And Southbridge too, or?
Southbridge, they were part of it originally. I think they are, they voted to come out of it.
Okay.
There is no cost to the town for being part of this shared service grant. And the amount that it increased since the last time around, I believe it was 300,000, and it's gone up to 504,000.
Do board members have any other questions?
Brooke, have the other boards of selectmen voted on this?
I'm sorry?
We have Oxford and the other select boards. Have they voted to adopt this new document?
The, I don't know if they have completed it yet. However, I know that Oxford was going through the process. Webster, of course, is the host community. And Brimfield, I think, was going through the process as well. So we actually voted it, kind of, I think, before everybody had received the updated document.
Are you satisfied with the changes that went through? Are they sufficient and...
Yes, yes, I am. So it's clarification of CMRPC's role as the grant administrator. So CMRPC is the one that kind of coordinates our communications with the state. And then they work closely with the town of Webster, who is the host. And then it identifies some admin fees to be able to, there's some fees that go to the grant administrator, CMRPC, and then also to the town of Webster. Because the town of Webster is ultimately the one that is hiring the shared service inspectors and coordinator. So they have basically the liability to handle them as employees. But they do work in our towns and going through the process. It has been, you know, helpful for us to have the added support. And again, this is, you know, something that the state is offering since COVID to try to give support to local boards of health. It is something that doesn't cost us money. Obviously, it does take time to coordinate, but we have a good relationship with the host community, with CMRPC, and I feel like this is a benefit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Has the time allotment changed? There's fewer communities. I think we were looking at a day or a day and a half per week before.
Yes, I mean, that's a, that's a great question. So if the, if the other towns are not part of that, we're hoping to be able to have more time with the, with the staff.
Thank you.
Motion, we accept and expend a revised Public Health Shared Service Grant renewal agreement in the amount of 504,000 from Mass Department of Public Health to support regional positions through central, South-Central Mass Partnership for Public Health, including a community health coordinator and a regional health inspector. And board vote sign, which I don't think we need to do that. Revised IMA. We don't have to put this part of the motions, I mean.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
Thank you. And if I can present the document for signature by the chair.
Is it just me?
It's, yes, right above the chair for the Board of Health. And then additionally, they have a document, the sister document that goes with this for the municipality statement of commitment. So that needs to be signed as well. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. We have the DDIS reports for solid waste recycling and economic development.
Madam Chair, members of the board, if I may. Tonight, we resume our departmental updates that we actually put on hold when we last came before you, I believe, end of April or May. I think it was the board's intent to hear reports that were more granular and ancient rather than the macro presentations you were getting. We asked the participants, and there are two tonight, solid waste in recycling is going to present as well as economic development. We asked that they try to hold it to under 10 minutes, at which point there'll be a Q and A period for the board to ask any questions that they may have. So, that being said, I don't know who wants to come up and bat first, but enter and sign in, please.
Hi, I'm Colleen Hines, the Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator. I oversee the Solid Waste and Recycling Program, working directly with Casella in an effort to reduce solid waste tonnage and increase proper recycling practices in town. Single and multifamily homes up to four units are eligible to participate in the municipal solid waste and recycling program. Service recipients are provided with one trash cart and one recycling cart per unit based on the assessment of the property. Trash carts will either be 35 gallon or 64 gallon. Most recycling carts are 96 gallon, but we do have a smaller 35 gallon option, mostly used by single seniors who aren't generating a lot of recycling and have a hard time managing the size of the larger cart. The fee is based off the size of the trash cart with recycling included. So we encourage residents to get the large recycling cart unless they have a reason not to. The Recycle Smart program was developed by Mass DEP and MRFs across the state to make recycling as easy and efficient as possible for all Massachusetts residents. Every city and town in Massachusetts with curbside collection follows the same single stream recycling guidelines. Just because an item is labeled with the recycling logo, it does not mean it is necessarily recyclable single stream. Everything that goes into your recycling cart must fit into one of these four categories. Mixed paper and cardboard must be flattened and broken down. Metal food and beverage cans, glass bottles and jars, plastic bottles, jars, jugs, and tubs. If the item does not fit into one of these four categories, it does not belong in your recycling cart. If you can search the recyclopedia on recycle-smartma.org if you are unsure if your particular item can be recycled curbside. If it cannot go in your curbside recycling bin, the recyclopedia will offer alternative options such as recycling elsewhere, donation, bulk pickup, or putting it in the trash. Putting non-recyclable items in your cart with the hopes that they will be recycled is called wish cycling, and it actually causes more harm than good. Items that do not belong in the cart can cause problems at the recycling facility, leading to costly shutdowns imposing a risk to employees. These are some examples of violations I've seen while out on the route. So none of these items should be in your recycling cart. This is the most recent data from Mass DEP regarding waste generated per municipality. As you can see, the Auburn is in the orange. So there's room for improvement here. We should have the data from 2023 by the end of the year and hope to be trending down towards less pounds per household per year. Educating residents on waste reduction and proper recycling is the most effective way to reach this goal. Certain items have been banned from the waste stream by the state. Such items are not permitted in your trash cart, including all recyclable materials. All trash must be bagged, and lids on your trash cart must be completely closed. Any excess trash must go in a town-approved blue overflow trash bag. These bags can be purchased at Shaw's Park and Shop in One Stop Convenience in Auburn or the Price Chopper at Southwest Cutoff in Worcester. And here are some examples of trash violations, items that should not go in your trash cart. The town offers multiple resources for certain hard-to-dispose of items. There are several licensed donation bins in town that accept textiles, including those that are damaged as long as they are dry and free of hazardous waste. Textiles that are not able to be sold or donated to be worn again are recycled into rags, carpet padding, or vehicle stuffing. So just because it doesn't look like something someone would wear doesn't mean it should go in the trash. The Mercury Recovery Program has been extremely successful and is a free option for residents to keep this hazardous material out of the waste stream and the environment. Another option for disposal of other hazardous waste is NEDT in Sutton. Auburn residents will receive up to $85 off the cost of disposal for their first visit each year. Auburn residents can bring their Sharps to Fire Rescue Headquarters for safe disposal. The fire department has a machine which sterilizes and grinds up the Sharps so they can be safely thrown in the trash. Sharps must be in an approved Sharps container, which can be purchased through the Board of Health. Prescription and over-the-counter medications can be brought to the police station and put in the med drop box. Again, this is a free program for residents. Yard waste is picked up curbside in the spring and the fall for residents on the Solid Waste and Recycling Program. All residents have access to the leaf and brush pile located at DPW during their operating hours. An annual permit must be purchased on site. Yard waste and food waste can also be composted at home. Compost bins are sold for $25 here at the Board of Health. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
If, if you could provide us like some information, what could we do to help meet some of these waste reduction goals as we're contributing to that? How do we reduce our... How do we reduce our waste and help you guys achieve the reduction?
So opting for reuse is great. Instead of, you know, buying plastic cups, bottles, stuff like that, you can get, like, one bottle that you can reuse, doing dishes versus paper plates, anything that will reduce the amount of trash that you're actually throwing away. Food waste is the heaviest component in the waste stream, so eliminating that will significantly reduce tonnage, which will lower disposal costs for the town and, in turn, the residents.
And have we seen a uptick in people using the, I just lost that last page there? The composters. Have you seen an uptick in people using them, or?
Yeah, we do. We sell a lot. I don't have the exact number of how many we've sold, like, this year, but it, we've, I sold a couple, like, within the last couple of weeks. So it's generating interest, and it's a good resource if you have the time and the space to put into it.
Thank you.
Do other Board members have questions?
Yeah, question. Does, what is the percentage of residents who participate in the trash program?
So, most of the eligible properties are on the service. So, we service up to multifamilies up to four units. So, any of, like, the condos, apartments, mobile home parks, they're not eligible. But most of the single and multifamily homes up to four units are on the service.
And can I just highlight that this program is self-funded, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so even though it's in the town budget, it just kind of cycles through, and the fees pay for the disposal of the trash and the recycling.
Yes, collection and disposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, members of the Board, we're gonna have Brooke Holgren come up and give you a presentation on economic development.
I am Brooke Holgren. Thank you, Ed, for the introduction. I am the Economic Development Coordinator in town, and I will give you a presentation of the division. The purpose of the division and my role is to create strategies and materials to increase the commercial and industrial tax base, to redevelop underutilized properties, foster job creation, and support the business community. Specific responsibilities that I have are community development plan implementation, so these are things like the economic development plan, the master plan, rapid recovery plan, and the housing plan, and there are a few other plans as well. Grant administration and project management, business development, support and initiatives, and then participation with the Chamber of Commerce. A few of the, the groups that I work with, sorry, are the Development Coordination Group. DCG consists of town regulatory departments that meet regularly to offer pre-development advisement to applicants on projects, including but not limited to new construction, opening a business, or hosting an event in the town of Auburn. The meetings are designed to clarify the permitting process and provide applicants with constructive feedback on the nature of their proposed projects. We also meet regularly, quarterly, with the Business Roundtable. These are some of our members of that group. This group was created to encourage and foster regular communication between town staff and the business community in Auburn. We meet to review important town updates and address any questions or concerns raised by the Roundtable members. They provide feedback on economic development initiatives, ongoing projects, and a variety of other community matters. And as I stated earlier, I work with the Chamber of Commerce very often. I'm the town agent to the Board of Directors, and I also serve on the subcommittees, the Program and Promotion Subcommittee and the Tax Classification Subcommittee. With the Programs Subcommittee, I help them to plan a lot of the events that they put on, various events and meetings. There are about 28 per year, including their annual meeting, the Auburn Business Expo, the golf tournament, annual scarecrow contest, Town Talk, Holiday Party, Lunch and Learns, ribbon cuttings, and more events of the like. Some recent projects and initiatives that I've been working on are marketing Auburn, getting the word out about some of Auburn's events that we're hosting in town, and a lot of these events are put on by fellow town departments like Rec and Culture. The Discover Central Mass is Central Mass's tourism agency, and that's a really good resource to get the word out there about these events that are being put on within our town and generate some interest in these events. We're also working on developing an EDC Facebook specifically for economic development initiatives and projects, and updating some marketing materials for the town with current census data and ongoing projects. I have also developed an Auburn Economic Development map, which is on the website, auburnmass.gov, under DDIS. This is an interactive map. It is not interactive on this PowerPoint because this is a screenshot, but if you were to go to the website, you can click on this map, and all of these yellow dots are businesses in town, and that links directly to their websites, so you can access their information that way. And there are a few other categories. The blue ones are municipal buildings and facilities. There are public improvement projects like Drury Square shown on there, and recent development, commercial development as well. I've also compiled a list, which is on the website, of available commercial properties with some zoning information for potential businesses that want to come to town or expand to be able to access this list, and they link directly to the real estate listings as well from this website. I've also been working with the Planning Division on regional mall zoning review to hopefully explore potential uses which may increase occupancy and/or allow new creative redevelopment, and looking into what other malls have done with the vacant space or the vacant storefronts that are in there. And to complement the ongoing improvements to Drury Square, we are still working on the Wayfinding Grant for both the signage and the banners. These summer banners with the fireworks are up now down in Drury Square, but there will be seasonal banners year-round. There's spring, fall, and winter shown here. And for the Wayfinding signage, we've chosen a vendor, and we're in the process of finalizing plans to send to DOT because a lot of them will be placed along DOT jurisdiction, Route 12 and Route 20.
Thank you so much. Do Board members have any questions?
Have you seen a lot of new business requests or people funneling to you and inquiring about space in Auburn?
Yes, I, a lot of them do request to come to DCG, and that is the first place that I point them to as well, just to meet with all of the regulatory departments in one place. People have expressed that it's very helpful to them before going to official hearing to get this guidance on their projects and maybe where they should start first. So far, in 2024, we've had 13 meetings and reviewed 26 licenses slash developments, so.
Is that what you would expect? Is that more or less like?
Yeah, normally, each year, there's around 50 to 60, so being halfway through 2024, that's about on par.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we move up item number nine, A, which is the Wallace Ave Developer Request for Board Vote of Support for the Proposed 40B Project and to sign off for the LIP application.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Mr.
Madam Chair, we got a request from the developer, Sotier is here, asking the Board to consider a letter of recommendation for a LIP application. Sotier is here to answer any questions you may have, or to, I don't know if you have anything to present, Sotier. You wanna summarize the, the request to the Board?
The, the application has been prepared and has been shared with the Board of Selectment. Before it gets submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Living, Living Communities, it requires the Board to also sign off on the same application. I've run through the questions that you had when we last met, and I believe you have the answers to all the questions. So I'm at the stage right now that I'm looking for your support to file the application with the state.
Do Board members have questions?
Yeah, I mean, it's supporting your application, but we haven't really had many discussions. I know we've had discussions about setting up a working group to have discussions, but I just, I don't feel I can support or not support something when, I mean, to me, it's still very early in the process, so I don't know what I can really do to support or not support it without having more discussions around it. We've seen tentative plans, and I know you've mentioned a few times that you would work with the other boards, no problem, but.
Yeah, this application process is the process by which it allows to do exactly what you are asking me to do right now. In other words, without filing the application, I don't have any legal standing to answer any questions or spend any money to get you the answers that you're looking for. So to have a conversation about the project itself, it's just a concept. You know, I don't know if it's doable or not doable, but what this happens is, it goes to the state, the state asks questions to get concerns that you may have or issues that you like to be part of the application process before the state acts on it. Once the state acts on it, then it becomes a legal standing for which I can file formally an application for zoning Board of Appeals, at which time any and all questions are being brought forth to the Board, and the Board may make decisions for one issue or another issue, whatever it may be. But without the application, I really can't do anything at this particular time because I don't have the details that you may be looking for.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I know the Board had two questions, and we provided reports as a result of the concerns that the Board had. One, is there capacity to supply water, and is there capacity that would allow for increased sewer flow? Both those reports reflect that there is capacity to do that. In terms of the traffic report, I think there was a preliminary traffic report that was submitted by Sotier. Certainly not a comprehensive, thorough report, but it's a preliminary report that the Board had received before.
So may I amend that comment, because the report actually states that they don't currently have capacity, but they plan to have capacity.
So I think the, the water, there was a letter from the, the Water Superintendent that states that there is adequate water supply, and there were a study of the
Certain sewer management.
The sewer infrastructure.
Correct.
In various locations in the neighborhood that would allow for increased capacity.
I didn't read it that way. I read that without the interconnection, that they would not meet the minimum requirements.
The interconnection has been made.
Okay.
That's that increased backup water supply.
Okay, so that didn't, that said that it would be done this year, which is great. And then there was another project that was looking more like 2026, and that has no impact on this?
I think that was taken into consideration. So as you know, that backup water line that was proposed for Perry Place also would provide for increased capacity through that development as well as Eastland Partners on the west side of town.
But it hasn't been completed, but it.
Well, the projects are currently on, the Eastland Partners is currently under construction. Perry Place is currently before the state, and I believe the interwater connection has already been made to the city of Worcester.
Can we just confirm that with the Water Department?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions?
Well, just, just a process question, or, because in the past, the last two that we've done, we've had, we've discussed remediation before we, we discuss a letter of support. Have we received any comments from the residents as to any of their concerns? Because ultimately, they're the ones who I'm interested in knowing what, you know, concerns they have, and what they would like to see, what kind of remediation might alleviate some of their concerns? You may not be able to alleviate them. I have no idea without knowing that.
Neither would I. At this particular junction, technically, all those things get done at the ZBA. The ZBA will demand things that any applicant submits anything with the zoning Board of Appeals. So that process itself that you're describing is taken care of. The ZBA could deny the comprehensive permit if it sees that it's not in its interest to approve something that cannot be justified as a usable project. So it's not like we're circumventing. We're doing this with the intent that you have ultimate control of the project as opposed to a developer going in and submitting an application directly to the ZBA. I chose to work with the town and answer their questions and satisfy the questions that are raised, but I don't know what those questions are until the details are provided.
So that's not my understanding of the LIP process. That's not our role to defer to the ZBA on remediation issues. When we met, I think it was last November, December, I mentioned, these are the processes that this Board has followed, and I'm certainly not going to support anything without a remediation plan in place.
Well, what? I'm, I'm just curious, what is the remediation plan that you're looking for?
We're looking for offsets of whatever impacts you're doing. For me, specifically, I'm looking more at the neighborhood, what can we do? Obviously, there might be some town issues that staff may bubble up, the water district may bubble up. I'm willing to listen to anybody on those particular issues, but
Totally understand.
We have never, and my understanding of the LIP process is, we don't just say, yes, we're gonna support this, and not have a discussion.
Sure.
So I'm not in favor of voting to support anything until we start really discussing those issues.
I think one of my concerns, and you did provide the traffic study, and I appreciate, like, that's gonna be increased flow. You know, what does that safety look like in that neighborhood with that increased traffic flow?
Yeah.
And, and the report definitely outlined some of that, but what mitigating factors can we do to make sure that the neighborhood does remain safe? So that's something, again, I know it will be voted on.
And it could be a condition on whatever it is of support you're gonna provide.
And, and that's, that's what I think. And that's what I think we're looking for is conditions. We want to make sure that we're providing that backbone for the boards through their jurisdiction or oversight.
Understood.
And again, I know you said you would do things. I think having some of that in writing and understanding those concerns, safety is a big thing for me, and I know it's a reason that the state could deny the application as well.
Absolutely, right.
So I just want to make sure we do work together. I'm not trying to.
No, I hear you. I just don't have any information from the board to what exactly it is that you would put us conditions in, that what are the issues that you're looking to see addressed? Whatever there may be, you can include it in your letter as a condition for doing what we want to see done here, you know?
And I do think, again, we voted to close that hearing, and I would have liked to have heard more from the residents on that to help inform that. It might not be a lot of issues or concerns or things that you are already planning on doing, but I don't know that.
Yeah, I understood, understand.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think it's important to remember that we need to hear the concerns of the neighbors that are going to be impacted, as well as some of the concerns that may be raised by town departments as it relates to some of the items that you have raised. I would suggest that we hold another public hearing and listen to the neighborhood concerns and what impacts they may feel and what would it take to make those conditions a lot safer and a lot more accommodating? That way, Sotier will have an idea on what it is. Maybe at that point, we could, once we vet all that out and hear all that, then we can enter into a negotiation period with the developer to see if he's willing to do certain things, bring it back to the board, and you weigh that as part of your consideration as part of Sotier's request.
Understood.
I do understand that there are people from the neighborhood here today that would actually like to be heard, and I am welcome to it. It's not so much a question and answer period, but you can voice your concern, so perhaps he can come back with additional information that might satisfy. So if you want to come up, I see you wait, and I'll get to you, I promise. Please come up and just your name and your address, if you wanted, at the podium or at the chair, wherever you would be most comfortable.
My name is Dan Craig from 90 Wallace Ave, and I've been asked to speak for the neighborhood, but I can't address everybody's question that they might have. But what I can say at this point is, we probably don't know what we don't know. You know, we don't know some of these conditions because, you know, we're not versed in traffic studies, and we can read them, and they all talk about minimums, you know, minimum standards, minimum requirements. What is the minimum size of a lot in Auburn that we can consider for, you know, for a 40B project? You know, is it five acres, six acres, 10 acres? We don't know that. But what I do know is I have a letter here, a copy of probably what you have from the 18th of July from the water department saying that you have insufficient flow and that it would be, my recommendation, you know, is a, and a butter, I'm a direct to butter of this project, that nothing be signed off until there is proof that this project has been completed, right? Because it says, you know, possibilities of 2006. Now, all of a sudden magically, in the last, you know, 30 days, this has been completed. I wouldn't be satisfied with that. It's not in writing of anything that we have, and we came up and asked for copies. So as representative of the neighborhood tonight, I'm going to ask the board not to sign at this time because there's too many unknowns. And I thank you for suggesting that we would have a chance to speak at a public hearing, you know, to voice our concerns, because there are many. There are many safety concerns in the neighborhood that, you know, don't fall within the guidelines of, you know, a traffic study. You know, they talk about sight lines and that. They don't talk about children playing in the street or the two or three houses that are going to be impacted by a car sliding out of this driveway in the wintertime. They don't talk about the fact that this road cannot be widened properly because the offset to this road favors one side of the road drastically. The center of the road is almost on the edge of the road. You know, there would be property taking to make this road wider and safer. So I believe that, you know, a public hearing to give all these people the time to talk about this is definitely needed at this point in time before you make any decision on the LIP application.
Thank you so much. Is there a piece that you would like to come? Could you just give your name and address again, please?
Again, Dawn Knight, 25 Wallace Avenue. I think I talked to, was it Ann? Did I talk to you earlier this week? And I kind of gave her an opinion. My, Ed's not a resident of Auburn, is that correct? Not that that matters, but, you know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. What was it?
You're not a resident of Auburn, are you?
I am not.
Okay, well, the rest of you on the board, selectmen, I assume you're all residents of Auburn. Now, I don't know how well you know Wallace Avenue, but it sounds like a few of you do. My parents bought the house in 1937. I've lived there in the community all my life. I've seen Auburn and Wallace Avenue. Wallace Avenue is a very small street, number one. If the person that owns that property at what they call 88 Helen Street, I think is what I've heard, 88 Wallace Avenue, it's right next to 90. We have no problem if the person that owns that five acres wants to put up a single-family house. Just because it may be zoned right now as 40B, number one, I personally, this is my personal opinion, I'm not trying to convince any of you about it, I'm not in favor of this 40B thing in the state of Massachusetts. My conversation with Ann is that the town may be able to take care of our 40B situation by the work that's already in progress right now. If that takes care of it, then we don't have to worry about Wallace Ave or Perry Avenue. You know, Auburn has stayed the same population for most of my life, okay? Development, there's nothing wrong with development if it's good development. Development doesn't mean building houses. It means getting, getting a better town, better education, better DPW, better everything that we need. That's what development is. It's not development by people that don't live in town, that don't live in this place. And Wallace Ave, if any of you haven't here, if any of you haven't been down Wallace Ave, it's a, there's a lot of kids on the street. It's a small, narrow street, curvy street. I always go 20 to 25 miles an hour. Once in a while, I get some crazies that want to go a little faster, but it's not a place that can be developed. My background's engineering. You cannot make Wallace Ave, in my opinion, to put up with these apartments they have in whatever they're calling it, Phase One or whatever they call it. And I'll tell you right that, you know. So my opinion, again, to the landowner is to, you know, if he wants to build a house there or something like that himself or do something else, my opinion to the developer is go someplace else, you know? I don't, I don't think you're probably a member of Auburn. If you are, I'm surprised that you buy a development in Wallace Avenue. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Can you just provide your name and your address?
Good evening, all. My name is Ed Parkett. I live at 92 Wallace Ave. I have, like Dawn, have been in this neighborhood for an awful long time. I've been here for 74 years, and I've seen the changes in that neighborhood over those years, all positive changes. Let me start off by saying, this development has no business being on that street or in the neighborhood. That's a commercial enterprise in a residential neighborhood. It does not belong. The traffic study that you have in your hands, that states in there that the average traffic per day is going to be 536 vehicles a day on average. That just counts for the people that are going to live in these buildings. 536 additional trips a day, which is, that street cannot handle it. At its biggest point, it's 18 feet wide. In the wintertime, the school bus just barely makes it down that street. On trash pickup day with all the trash bins out, same problem. School's starting, the kids get out in the streets, they're riding these electric scooters up and down the street like it's a playground. This does not belong in that neighborhood. Now, one of the things this developer was talking about was getting approval from you so he can move forward. And if he doesn't get approval, he's telling you that he can go back to the 40B board and appeal this. Let me tell you, he can't because you already have three other projects that you're reviewing. That makes that process null and void. He can't go back. And the reason he's going with a friendly approach, it's because, and I got this from a 40B lawyer I talked to, that's a standard approach for a town that's already got three projects under view, and he's looking for approval so he doesn't have to go through the normal process. You do not have to entertain this project at all. You can not so much reject it, but just not accept it. It's very important. The other thing that's part of this process is the fact that the developer has sent an email offering money to the town for projects. Now, we have a copy of that email. At some point in time, if somebody would like to see it, we'll be happy to show it to you. But there's a few other things that I want to talk to. I'm a little excited because you were just talking about the water department. Now, if you read the last paragraph of that water department letter, they rescind approval, is what it states in that letter. They rescind approval that was given to this project in the March meeting. That means they're not going to do it, and they don't have the funds or the money to develop any more systems to make this system work. They're going to do some engineering studies and maybe some book at, to upgrade the system, but that study isn't even going to, in that letter, it states that the study's not even going to be done until December of 2026. So why are we entertaining a project that we don't want, we don't need, and it doesn't belong in that neighborhood? The development cannot be appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee if the town has three or more requests under review, which I just said. Being submitted as a friendly application indicates that he knows that. The town can apply for what's called a certificate of compliance from the Housing Appeals Committee. That means the town is consistent with local needs and that the Housing Appeal Committee will uphold the town's decisions. Now, there's another caveat in that process, and that's what I call the .05 law. And that means the 40B process says that if you're, if you have, the town has growth towards their 10% number of .5% every year, they don't have to entertain any projects that they don't want. And that's what, if you apply for that process, you can do that. And then that means if you reject it, they don't have to come down and fight with, fight with you for it. It's a process. These are some of the new rules. I got this right off of the town website. It's called the fact sheet of the 40B, estate and affordable housing, and I printed it right off the town's website. All this information is available to all of you, and I suggest you look at it because there's a lot of things in there, which if we got a few more minutes, I'd like to bring up a few of them right off that sheet. Excuse me. Oh, the, what I was talking about is the state housing program that enables the cities and towns to adopt a housing plan that determines the production of .5 over one year and 1.5 over two years of the round housing stock eligible for inclusion in a subdivision inventory. This, if this is accomplished in any calendar year, the town will have 12 months to 24 months respectively, when it will have the ability to deny any chapter 40B program. And I believe you are already qualified for that. If I don't, if I got my facts right, last year you were at 2% above where you were the year prior. I don't know where you are this year. I hope you do, because you don't have to approve, or, excuse me, you don't have to accept this project under any circumstances. And if you take a hard look at that traffic report, there's a lot of stuff in there, but the deaths of the people on the street, which just happened to be right with this driveway is going to be. It's a street that cannot handle any more traffic. It's already a cut through for people going out to Rochdale and Luster. It's not just the people that live on that street. And if you're going to have another meeting on this, please notify the people. The last time, the only six people got notified in the letters that went out, six. There's over 100 and something houses on Berlin Street, Wallace Ave, Bylin Ave, Polyway, et cetera, that are part of this. It's going to affect everybody. This type of project affects everybody. It's going to have tax creep in it for the school systems, which are already overgrown, so to speak, and I think all of you know that. We have temporary classrooms out in the fields already on the new schools we just built. It's an awful situation. You have another option. The town could stop this by exercising its 61A First Right of Refusal option, like you did on South Hall Road, I think, a year ago. That will stop this project. This town, this piece of property, I don't know if you all are aware of it, but this used to belong to the town. It was given to the town for open space and recreation in perpetuity. And through some shuffling of the cards, it ended up with David Delalas, who's the guy that wants to sell the property to him, which he's going to get $75,000, $750,000 if this deal goes through, which to me is a big deal. And it doesn't belong in it. And I'm not even sure that it's zoned for 40B, and it's a 5.8 acres on this property. If you look at the zoning board, the zoning board requires a minimum of six acres to do a project, any conversion to a commercial property. This is commercial property. That requires to change this over to commercial property, you have to go before the town and you get a two-thirds vote to approve it. There's a lot of things to look at this, you know? I think I heard this right, that you're not going to vote on it tonight, but I also think when you do vote on it, that one, if you're going to have another meeting, make sure that everybody is notified on it. Number two, if you do vote on it, make sure that everybody gets notified and that you do due diligence, and I'll be happy to help you if you want to look at a lot of this stuff. I've got a lot of material here I haven't talked about yet that applies to this project. But most of it, I got right off the town website. This town does not want that type of project in that type of an area. It just, there's no common sense, and you've all heard that word before. Common sense applies to these things. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I hope you do due diligence on this, and make sure you check that letter you got from the water department because they rescinded their approval, and it's on the last paragraph of that letter.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. Is there, was there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Please, I'm going to have to start limiting you guys to three minutes, but please come up. Can you just give your name and your address?
My name is Jean Repackey, and I live at 9 Bylin Drive. Unlike the previous speakers, I am new to Auburn. My husband and myself retired here two years ago, and we chose Auburn and we chose our home, our neighborhood, for the beautiful, green, peaceful New England setting that it was. It was just like a postcard, and it still is. I would like you to drive down Wallace Avenue any summer evening around 6:30 and just look. People are out visiting each other, walking dogs, the kids are shooting baskets and riding scooters and all that sort of stuff. It's a wonderful place to raise children. It's a wonderful place to have a family. This project is so ridiculously outsized, we will be outnumbered four or five to one. And they're. And they're talking about 500-plus extra trips a day for the people who live there. Well, what about the delivery trucks that come and people moving in and out every month? That road suffers. It's already overused. And every winter, it gets more and more damaged, and every summer, we have to repair it. You throw in moving trucks, and it's just going to be destroyed even worse. It's just, it's like plunking down a shopping mall in the middle of a neighborhood that's just too many people in one place. A more moderately sized thing, we wouldn't be objecting. A reasonable-sized project, we wouldn't be objecting. But this thing is a monster, and it's just completely inappropriate to the setting that it's in. We are on a reservoir. I don't see how you can do something this size without a lot more testing and a lot more discussion of both flooding and how it's going to affect the groundwater. I would really want to see a lot of very in-depth work on that because it's a serious problem. And once it's there, it's never going away. So I think we really, really need to take time and examine every aspect of it before we even consider sending it to the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know, I know we intend to actually have a public hearing. This isn't a public hearing. If you would like to come up and speak for a few brief more minutes, I will allow you to speak. But please make sure that when we schedule the public hearing, you come back during the public hearing with these as well. Mr. Page.
I just want to say a couple of quick things. And at first, I would like to say the residents that came up here tonight were spot on. Absolutely true. There is no way that should go in that area. And to have a contract to come up here tonight and not to be able to answer questions is beyond me. Because I know if I was going to build a house in a lot, I would know the dimensions, I would know what I need, I would know about the water, I know about everything about that land. And if people had questions to ask me, I would be willing to sit down at a table if I have to, to answer their questions. He wouldn't answer any questions. He'd just act like he didn't know anything. I'm sorry, I'm all done. Thank you.
My point is, this is not a public hearing. We didn't come to answer questions.
That was the other thing. I want to thank Ed for saying that this should go to a public hearing and let the residents speak on it. And I hope you do, and I hope you don't vote for this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Robert O'Connor. I live at 87 Wallace Ave. I have a problem with the orientation of the driveway they're planning. They're going to point 500 cars right at my bedroom window. My house is 30 feet off the road. I don't even think I'll be able to sleep at night with all those headlights. Okay, or cars lying down or, you know. I don't think the project should be approved or even thought about. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then the last one. Yes. I'm going to do with your hand up and then back to you in the front, and that'll be the last of it.
19 Bylin Ave, precinct two, town meeting representative. I'm a little confused about who actually, or what entity is actually applying for this because the initial meeting, it was Westwood Associates. And then I have a notification from July 30th that it's Prentice Place Auburn. So can anyone tell me who actually is filing for this? I mean, what guise is being used here?
We'd certainly look into that.
Okay. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a real quick statement, something that I didn't mention last time up, but something I think it's important in your purview or reviewing this. I was involved the last time somebody tried to put 40B, which happens to be the same guy. That was shot down by the zoning board for a lot of good reasons. And one of them, and I've got a whole list, I still have all the paperwork from when that was shot down last time. And all the reasons that applied then still apply now, and that was only for 24 units. But one of the biggest things that was part of that was the fire department. They, that produced a letter stating that they could not get their apparatus up that driveway even after it was finished. And one of the things that's in that traffic study you have also is the grade of the driveway that accessed that. It's too steep, and you have all kinds of problems with stormwater. The system in that, on that street is not designed to handle the stormwater from the size of the parking lot you're talking about. And because of wetlands acts, you cannot dump the water from the parking lot into the wetlands, which is behind the property. The only place it can go is down to Wallace Ave, or you've got to build a pond to store it. So there's a lot of issues that have to be addressed on this before you just vote on accepting the application. And again, I reiterate, this is a project that shouldn't happen, and I hope you don't accept this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Do board members have any further questions? No. Okay.
More of a, so it sounds like some people aren't getting notified, but we are notifying a Butters and a Butters of a Butters? Or what is the?
So we're following the same notification that's done by any regulatory board? We do the 500 feet? So.
So I know the last time we notified people on the block as in addition to the Butters. When we schedule the public hearing, there will be a public notification of the hearing date and time. And can we notify that street, just the residents of Wallace Ave?
So I think we need to define the outer limits of who should be notified. And so we're open to that. But certainly, we do follow a standard that's done by the planning board or any other regulatory board when we do a radius in terms of notification for public hearings.
Through the chair. Residents can sign up for notifications through the town's website. It won't be specific to that, but it will be agendas for the boards that this project would be going before. I recommend you do that and get notification via email and go in and look at agenda to see if it's on there. Because we, even with taking extended action, I can't guarantee everyone will be notified. But if you take action on yourself and sign up for that, then there should be no excuse that we do miss you. But we are following state guidelines. So I just want to make sure that you guys know there are steps you can take.
What is that radius?
500 feet, Adam? Three?
We can certainly look into what would be a more broad notification for that area, and we can take your recommendations into account. Thank you. Is there, I guess, is there, do we want, is there a motion on this? Or do we want to make a motion for a public hearing, to set a public hearing for this matter?
Make a motion that we set a public hearing with enhanced notification of Wallace Ave at a minimum. And obviously, as Mr. Chambers stated, the website does allow you to sign up. I sign up for it. I don't get all the notices either, but I've signed up as a board member just so that I know what's going on, not just in my neighborhood, but in the town in general. So it's a good resource to get information.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well for a public hearing. Is there a date?
You do the scheduling, Madam Chair, so I will leave it up to you to decide what works and what doesn't. But.
Okay. Let's look at the schedules and see if we can get some time and work with the developer so that he could be here as well and give the public ample time notification of the day. Sound good? Okay. Thank you so much, everybody, for coming. We are moving back up to number seven. We have no communications. For number eight, under select board general items, we have to vote to set the fall special town meeting. Do you want, yeah. Do you want to, let's have a five-minute break.
Make a motion to take a five-minute recess?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we just clarify what time we're coming back?
We'll be coming back at 7:56. So we're resuming after our five-minute recess. That's okay. We're resuming after our five-minute recess. We are on number eight, A, the vote on the 2024 fall special town meeting. So, yes, do we need a motion?
Just to the board members, just a little background on this. Typically, we have a scheduled fall town meeting late October. Our town clerk has, it requested that we hold it at a later date because of the early voting. They're going to be occupied with that. So we met as a, we met as a team and decided, although it's not the traditional Tuesday, that Tuesday, the board will be meeting because Monday is a holiday. So you would not be available, we would not be available for a fall town meeting on Tuesday. So we're suggesting Wednesday, the 13th, with a backup on the 14th.
Board members have any questions or concerns?
I'm just wondering, is this something we would hold town meeting members for? Because again, I don't know what their schedule's like on a Wednesday, if they're used to a, and then the month change as well. I just want to make sure we're going to have enough for a quorum.
Historically, we've had them in November before. We've had them, we, last couple of years, we had them at the end of October, but it was very common to have at the middle of November in years past. So we did that as a result of some of the software changes that drive our billing system and wanted to give the assessors some additional time to make that change and get accustomed to the changes. So this is not unique. We've had them in November before.
Have you had them on a Wednesday?
We've had them on various days.
We used to do them on Thursdays.
I'm just concerned with the quorum and the change. I'm open to it. I'm not against that. I just want to make sure.
It is a holiday week. That's, that's my only concern. You have Veterans Day. There are a lot of activities around that time. Plus, you have people traveling for the holidays to get ahead of the travel. So, I mean, I know Thanksgiving falls on the 28th this year, so it might not be an issue, but we may have an issue with quorum.
Mr. Kazanovich, how many town meeting members do we have? And how many do we need for quorum?
So we have 120. I don't know if we have 120 sitting town meeting members. There may be a vacancy or two as a result of some changes. But it's recognized as 120. We would need 80.
And this would be a three-month, a three-month notice for it?
Yes. So we can, we can post it on our, on our website. We do a code red to all of our town meeting members. We can do that well in advance, just as a reminder. Please notify the treasurer's, I mean, the clerk's office if you're unable to attend. We can do that well in advance.
Thank you.
The only other question I have, we're closing the warrant on September 13th. That's, that's a little early for a meeting on November 13th. Why couldn't we push it to the end of September?
We actually, coming in, it was a week earlier, and I had suggested that we extend it by a week. We typically notify our departments once the board takes a vote that the warrant is going to close. They know that the request is going before you tonight. They've known that weeks in advance. We've communicated that. So even though the vote didn't take place, they're preparing their town meeting warrant articles with the expectation that the warrant is going to be open.
They may know, but we're sitting here on April 19th. Do the residents know? No, they do not. So to me, if we're going to push it into the middle of November, we should at least give people a month to, if there are residents who have something that they want to present to the special town meeting. It's not a fall town meeting. It's a special town meeting.
I have no objections if the board desires to extend it by a week.
Mr. Kazanovich, how much time does the finance committee need to review it? And how much time is required to print all the warrants and to mail the warrants?
So we would have to determine the level of funding necessary to meet the, any demands that are, or any requests that are being made. Those warrant articles would have to be reviewed by town council, which typically takes, I would say, a week, a week and a half. And then the finance committee and the board of selectmen are going to have to take a position on the warrant articles before, at least two weeks before, because we're required to mail out the warrant two weeks for a special or a fall town meeting.
So they, everyone needs to get the warrant mailed to them two weeks before November 13?
Yes.
Yeah.
So roughly on Halloween, the warrant has to be mailed. If we go back, probably we have to wrap it up by mid-October.
So my point is this, it's great that we all need this time, but this meeting is for the residents, not for us. So if the 27th is too late, why can't we do the 20th? Which is a week.
I'm sorry. To set the, we're just on voting to set the date of town meeting.
But then we have to open and close. So that's all part of that.
We can take those items as we get to them. If you want to propose to extend having the warrant open, which I'm not opposed to either, that's certainly something we can discuss.
Right. This is all one item, Madam Chair. I'm just talking about one item.
There's three votes, though. Yes.
Well, but it's one item. We're not doing three separate agenda items. Three separate votes, but not three separate agenda items.
Fair.
I'm happy, I'm happy to vote to open, or what are we saying? To set the fall town meeting on Wednesday, November 13th at 6:00 p.m. with a backup date of Thursday, November 14th at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Now, we would need a vote to open the warrant for.
I will make a motion that we open the warrant for the special town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
There's no date associated? Is that?
As like, open as of today?
As of the.
As of today. I just want to confirm that. Okay. I will be in favor of opening it as of.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. And finally, we would need a motion pending discussion on closing the town warrant.
I will make a motion that we close the warrant for the special town meeting on Friday, September 20th, 2024, and close business that day.
With closing the.
So we backed it up more to account for more time because.
Yeah, what's the reasoning?
We're just giving it another week.
Well, I'm just saying we could, we could even go further out based on everyone backing it. So if the 20th is acceptable to everyone, I will agree to that.
It gets, it gets very tight if you start, because there is a lot that has to happen before they, these agendas get mailed out.
No, I don't disagree with that. But I think, as Mr. Carpenter stated, I just, our residents need to be made aware, and if they're going to bring forward items, they're not as versed as town administration is and the board's getting these things together. So I feel confident we have plenty of time to get that, and I'm okay with the 20th as well.
So there is a motion and a second? All those in favor? So there is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. In our packets, there is a drain layers license. Does anybody have any questions on the license?
I make a motion, we approve the drain layer license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We're moving along to 8C, Proclamations and Recognitions. We have none. There are some gift acceptances in our packets. Is there a motion? Do you want to take them item by item?
Yes. I'll make a motion, we accept a gift in the amount of $1,000 from the Auburn Chamber of Commerce for the concert series with a letter to be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. There is a second one in that packet?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude and a letter be prepared for the chair's signature from Central One Federal Credit Union in the amount of $1,000 for a concert in the park.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Moving on to the DDIS Animal Control.
Make a motion that we accept a gift in the amount of $250 with gratitude from the family of Howard Goodrich Jr. in the amount of $250 for the Catherine Sabina Animal Compound.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. And the final item, gift acceptance, there is a DPW Parks scoreboard for Lower Lemansky Softball Field.
Make a motion that we accept a gift from the Auburn Fast Pitch of a sign in an approximate value of $23,325 with a letter to be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So we are moving along to 9B, discuss the composition of the Wage Theft Committee and potential vote to designate a select board member to appoint to the committee. Did you want to...
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, we have three residents who have expressed interest on serving that committee. When we placed the ad, we suggested that one to two members of the Board of Selectmen participate. I think there was some interest on the board's involvement. One to two members of the Finance Committee. I could tell you we got an email of interest from Patrick Jones, and we got an email of interest today or yesterday from Steve Concilio. So we do have two Finance Committee members who we can appoint. And we put a notification out to the Chamber of Commerce. We have not received any feedback from them at this point in time. And I was notified by a member of this board, Mr. Crane, that he would like to serve on that committee as well. I don't know if there is another board member that would like to. So right now, in total, including Mr. Crane, we would have one... We'd have six members.
We would need an odd number.
So the ad did say two to four Auburn residents? We have three. So we may get another application. We could try to get another application. Or we may get a nomination from the Chamber. We could put out another request.
Through the chair, I think two members wrote on their application that they were union affiliated and some... And I don't know about the third. I just want to know if that third person is union affiliated as well, and if all three residents are associated with a union, I think we need to get residents with a different background.
Excellent catch. We do have the vice president of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce.
Correct. We were seeking the Chamber of Commerce representation as well, so...
So I guess my understanding is that because it's a committee, the town manager appoints committee members, and we have the opportunity to vote on a board member to serve. Mr. Crane has offered to serve. Is there anyone else on the board that would also like to serve?
I might, but in total transparency, I am a union member. So if the concern is that we're going to have a lopsided committee, then I wouldn't volunteer to serve if that's a sensitivity for board members. But, you know, I don't think personally I would make a judgment that a person is a union member, that they're going to have a particular point of view. They might. And we do want both sides.
Yeah. I would also, if you did not want to serve or thought maybe your union affiliation would not be wanted. I would... I am not a union member, and I would be willing to serve for the board as well.
Yeah, no. I would happily defer to you, Madam Chair. So...
We need to set an odd number for the committee.
Yes. I will make a motion that the board appoint Mr. Crane and Ms. Ruffly as our representatives to the Wage Theft Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I am a yes as well. It feels weird to vote for myself, but all right.
Hopefully, you did it at the last election.
I did, but like, in open. So we're moving on to 9C, the announcement of open meeting law trainings for boards and commissions has been scheduled for Thursday, September 26th at 6:00 p.m. Did you want to discuss?
No, it's going to take place in this room. We'll put out a notification to all board and committee members that the vote took place and that the training will occur. Typically, those training sessions are well-attended. Attorney Hennigan does a great job. I know the board was anxious to get this training underway. I've already coordinated that with Attorney Hennigan, so that is the night that we agreed upon.
And can we assure that the meeting will be taped?
We can arrange to have it taped, so those who are unable to attend will have an opportunity, as they come on board, to participate in that taped training session.
Thank you.
What's the time commitment, Mr. Manager? For people who might be concerned, it's a school night, it's a work night, what kind of commitment are we talking about?
Typically, in the past, I think these run about an hour and a half. And it all depends on the level of engagement by those who are participating, if they have any questions or have any areas that they want to, I guess, ask questions on.
Interesting. Okay.
Okay. So we're moving on to number 10, tabled items. We have none. Number 11, member items. Mr. Carpenter, we are discussing a possible working group?
Yes. So we had postponed this, and I thank the board for their indulgence. I wasn't able to come to the last meeting. But there's really nothing different from my point of view. We want to make sure that there is a policy in place. We saw that tonight where, you know, the developer had, you know, obviously, he's worked in towns that have these type of programs. But we've also found that some of these are outdated. There's been updates to 40B and whatnot since some of these policies that we've shared have been, you know... So we need to look at it from a staff direction so that they know what to expect from the developer perspective, so that the applicant knows what to expect in the residents as well as board members. So that's, you know... And speaking with the manager, you know, the ZBA in planning, which most of these projects, those are the two boards that are included, you know, obviously, it would be one of us. And asking those DDIS to designate an appropriate staff member. I know the manager's talked about using CMRPC to do some sort of support function, but he can certainly speak to what his plans on that is or are.
I still have questions and concerns about this. I think every parcel that comes up, if we have a set guidelines or policy that says every time we're going to ask for sidewalks, or every time we're going to, you know, address these issues, if it moves into an area that has sidewalks, are we just out because that's what we said we've asked for every time? I also have concerns on what happens when we meet safe harbor. We have a policy in place. Does that open us up to litigation because we have a policy in place? Once we meet safe harbor, we can deny them? But we have a policy in place that says if you meet these guidelines, we'll accept your project. So those are my major concerns around them. And I just, I think each parcel is different, and it needs to maybe follow a set of guidelines, or this is how we will move forward. But I'm concerned on calling it a policy because that puts forth, like, this is what the town will do.
Well, no, it's what this board will do. Where the... So whether you call it a policy or procedure, I couldn't care less. This board can amend it, can remove it. You know, I would love to review all of our... Every single one of our policies, because I haven't been on the board for most of the ones that have been voted. Now, it's been 10 years since I've been on the board. These policies are 15, 14 years old, and they may not reflect what we are seeing and what an applicant needs. So I hear your... But I have never said that the purpose of doing this is to find what works, not to say every street has to have a sidewalk, everything has to be 24-foot wide. That's what the planning board does. I'm not looking to do that. As far as safe harbor, that's an excellent point. That can be built into this. What do we do when we reach that?
My concerns are calling it, honestly, are calling it a policy. A policy of this board implies that we will follow this continually. And while I think policies can get updated, they don't regularly get updated. And I would hate to put forth an action plan for a board that might not include me. And, you know, I like the idea of having a set of guidelines, and this is how we will work. And these are, you know, the questions in general we'll ask, and these are what we're looking for. But I'm really concerned with calling it a policy. I don't like... I don't think... I don't mind policies being updated. I would hate to think that every year that someone new comes on board that we're revising policy. I think we should have policies that are... stand the test of time and to have them just to be renewed, like, to be like, oh, well, we got rid of that one because we didn't really like it, or we didn't... It doesn't really apply anymore. While I understand those things happen, I just... I think we need to, if we're going to move forward with this, I think we need to be very careful on what we call it and what we put in it because I think it opens us up to scrutiny if we... If there is a developer that comes in and we don't include language that talks about how we're going to deal once we've met safe harbor, which is, to be quite honestly, fairly close. Or what happens when we're no longer in safe harbor if that, those same rules and regulations kind of apply?
So what if a board is in safe harbor and doesn't? So let me tell you from an audit perspective. The first thing we're going to ask you is, what are your policies and procedures? Who approved them? What date were they approved? The American Government Association of Auditors, what I'm telling you is, from professional experience, organizations are expected to have policies. We're going into this blind. We have nothing for the developer. We have nothing for the staff. We have nothing for us and nothing for the residents. I'm not saying, I haven't even formulated what I want this to be. I'm just saying we need a policy. And if there are things that we need to include in that, such as safe harbor or anything else, you know, we can't be afraid to do things because we're afraid someone, somewhere might do something. The reality is, 40B gives the developer everything that they want. They don't even have to come to us. So we could put the most draconian policy in place, and they could say, I'm going to the state. And the state will look at it, and they'll do their due diligence, and they'll do whatever it is that they're going to do. And then it'll go to the ZBA, and the ZBA will follow their process. But we've had three in the short time, in less than five years, we've had three developers come before us, and each time, we've done a dramatically different procedure. That is not appropriate, in my opinion. And, you know, to me, I don't think we need to worry about the boogeyman in the closet. We need to get a committee, look at it, come back, and see what we can do.
Madam Chair, may I speak? I assume that this committee is going to come up with guidelines for what the town would like to see when a 40B project comes to town. Not make it compulsory, but to say, this, we'd like to see sidewalks. That's a concern of our towns, et cetera, just to provide some guidance to our, like you said, to our departments and to a developer, that this is what the town is interested in. And it's not compulsory. It doesn't have to be.
I'm not opposed to guidelines. I am opposed to a policy that sets forth how we're moving forward. I think, despite your claim that we can make it as draconian as possible, I think anything that says, this is the only way we're going to work with you, developer, like, this is how we do it, this is the only way, is going to for... It's going to put us in a position where we are out of the negotiation period, and they will turn around and say, I choose not, because I know how you're going to act, I choose not to move forward with you. I will just go to the state. And I would hate to lose that opportunity to get things that would benefit the town because we put forth something that is...
Well, the reality is, you don't lose that because the ZBA can ask for remediation as well. But the reality is, you're conjuring up all these ghosts that don't exist because the policy, the procedure doesn't exist. And again, there have been three separate chairs for three separate projects, and each one of you have governed the board very differently and in ways that I haven't been included in the decision-making as to... We had one where we had a public hearing, and the chair said, with all of us sitting here, without talking to any of the board members, we're not going to take public comment. We're going to make the manager, who's not the one sitting there right now, you're going to send everything to the manager's email box, and then we're going to come back two weeks from now, and we're going to do this. And then I had another chair who did five public meetings, or six. We've done one. You've allowed him to speak at this one, which, and you've done a phenomenal job. So it's not a criticism. It's inappropriate for us to have something left up to a chair's discretion, especially because all of us are on the ballot, and we don't get consulted when you decide whether to recognize someone or you don't. And I have a problem with that. And I've had a problem with that. And I know I've spoken with you about that, about other chairs. This is our meeting. It's not the chair's meeting. It is our meeting. It's the board or the select board's meeting. We're here to meet with the public, get their concerns out. That's all this policy is trying to do. It isn't trying to say, you must do this, you must do that. It's trying to come up with a process so that when a developer perhaps wants to go through the lip process, this would be a guideline. It's not unusual for communities to do it. It's...
I'm okay with calling them guidelines. I have concerns to put them forth as the board's policy.
Well, I don't see... I think you're making a distinction that is of little value to anybody. It's a policy. That's what we do.
There is a big distinction between calling something a guideline because you are not forced to follow it, than calling something a policy.
If I may, so this would be a committee that would come back with proposals that, as a board, we would vote whether we want to adopt or not?
Yes.
So I think we're jumping the cart, like, putting the cart before the horse there. I know in my inexperience through the first lip, I asked for things that were not in our purview. I would like to have a committee that sets up things that we could have in our purview. And it doesn't have to be about sidewalks, but it could say, if you're going to go before these other boards, don't ask for 50 waivers. You can ask for... You can ask for certain waivers or, you know what, it's easier to deal with or, you know, you have to mitigate things by X percentage or whatever. Like we can leave it open and there can be lots of guidelines, but I do feel if I was a developer and saw how we treated three different people, I think that opens us up to suspect activities and people making insinuations that, you know, oh, well, if you donate to fireworks, you're going to get your plan approved. And I don't want that either.
That's fair.
So when it comes back in whatever form it is, I know legal's going to have to review to make sure we're protected. I think we would have more discussions about what should be entered or not entered into there before making a vote, whether we call it guidelines or procedures or something. I do think if you, whatever you call it upfront, will help to set that. And I would like procedures, to me, as more formal, that would get vetted properly. So I would be in favor of forming a committee to come back and propose things that we then vote on or we can vote to amend and we have, even with previous lip agreements, worked through each item. And I know things I had on there were stricken because it's probably not our purview and I would like more guidance on that.
That's fair.
Yep.
So is there a motion?
If I may, if there's a, guidelines or not, I believe each 40B project that comes before the board is going to have its own issues and it's going to be different. And it's different because it all depends on the willingness of the developer to work with the board. Some are very rigid, some are very welcoming and willing to do certain things. Whether they're guidelines or not, I think you're going to be facing the same issues. But in terms of like tonight, I'm trying to understand the impacts, I can't have negotiations with the developer without the board at least supporting a portion of the project that will allow that discussion to begin. Maybe a guideline would allow that discussion to happen. I don't know. I'm not going, I'm not trying to steer or to develop the components of that guideline. But it is quite embarrassing when, you know, we don't know what the impacts are. We don't have a comprehensive project. We don't know how the details of the project, how it's going to impact the, but that's not going to be known until it goes before the regulatory board. So I understand there are certain discussions you could have in advance, but there are others that we don't know because we don't understand the full impacts based upon a comprehensive traffic study and things that aren't even done yet.
And I would like to think that this working group would allow for discussions to be had and again, not be rigid where we say you must add sidewalks, but to say, you know, safety concerns and again, 40B allows us to address safety concerns. All safety concerns will be addressed at this level, you know, because if these do go through without our support, we're on the hook to make it safe for these neighborhoods. And when I say we, the taxpayers are going to have to address this. So the mitigation, from my perspective, is to get the developer, while they're in there, to mitigate some of these safety concerns and maybe other potential. And again, every project's different and every developer's different. But I do feel, and again, I think having administration representation to say, I can't even talk to them. Okay, then maybe a policy or a procedure allows for discussions to be had at X level. And again, I don't want the developer spending money needlessly if it's never going to get buy-in. But I mean, I think this board has been pretty open with negotiating and working with these projects. And to me, even if we meet the threshold, we are in a housing crisis, so we should be having a procedure in place to deal with other areas where it makes sense and how to, again, work with people to develop and provide that much-needing housing in a safe, effective manner. And our housing production plan should address that as well. And I think this board should be supporting policies like that in ways that they can support them.
You know, someone mentioned consistency. Yeah, we need to be consistent in our policy, how we deal with these projects as they come in front of us so that we aren't, we aren't accused of any favoritism or requesting more information from one developer than another. So we need to have something that is consistent and at least in the beginning is, provides a general framework that everyone, it applies to everyone.
Here's a dilemma. In order to get that level of comprehensive study, it's going to require a monetary commitment by the developer to do these studies. I'm not so sure the developer is willing to do that without knowing that the board is going to vote to support, write a letter of support for an LIP project. That may force them to pull the plug and go directly to the state and not deal with that. But these are the kind of concerns I understand, Madam Chair. So there's that, there's that fine line there that I think needs to be considered.
Absolutely. Isn't that something we can consider in the committee rather than now before we talk about the committee?
Well, that's, that's all I'm trying to create. I'm not trying to dictate what this policy is or what's in it. I have one vote like everybody else. I'm just saying, sitting here over three projects, and again, I am not criticizing any of the chairs or any of the other members that I've served with. I'm just saying, it does not make sense, common sense, to not have a procedure, a policy in place that spells out at least in rudimentary form what it is that we expect, what we expect staff to come in with recommendations, if we even want those recommendations. When should the manager talk to this person? Who should be in the room? Should it be the DCG? Should it not be? We may reach safe harbor. We have, we all have very different points of view on affordable housing, I'm sure. We've never, as a board, had a conversation about safe harbor. We've never had a conversation about that. So I'm not concerned about it one way or the other. If we should include it, then let's include it and let's at least have the discussion at that level. And then we, as the five members, can discuss it some more before we adopt it. This committee, this group isn't going to decide for this board what the policy is. This board decides what its policy is. And, you know, the rule of thumb is policy should be reviewed on a yearly basis, should be signed off, there should be emergency procedures, there should be all these things that, you know, very few people meet. Or they take something that just is boilerplate that some lawyer wrote three years ago and said, well, it sounds good, so we'll put it in and they don't follow it. So that's the other thing. Whatever the policy is, we have to be able to implement it. So it can't be so rigid or involved that we can't provide the support for it.
Okay, is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we create a working group that will follow all open meeting law requirements. I know Mr. Crane was concerned about that. To investigate a policy and procedure for affordable housing projects seeking a lip agreement, that the town manager and the director of DDIS should designate appropriate staff members to participate in the group. Also, that a, that we ask a member of the ZBA and planning board to participate. And, you know, we could have as many members of this board who would like to participate as they would like. One to three, I'll say, just to be precise.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm opposed. So we have member items, 11B. We got an email in May from the town manager's office about recently passed legislation. Previously, the ABCC was responsible for liquor license amendments for businesses who want to serve alcoholic beverages outside. As of April 30th, 2024, local licensing authorities and select boards will be responsible for the approval, meaning that municipalities will need to establish a process and an application. Attached to that email was some processes and applications created by other communities. We have a policy from 2016, but at that time, applications were provided by the state. So we do need to come up with a process and application for this. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we get more money?
I do not believe so.
This is not intent for like an open air or a one-off event. This is for establishments that have an outdoor area and.
They currently have.
Yes.
And don't we already have rules around contained areas? They need to be contained.
I believe they were set forth by the ABCC. I think those still remain. My understanding is they will not be approving those applications anymore and sending them to us. Or they will not be weighing in on those applications because we used to give their, like, no objection, kind of. So we do need to come up with an application and a procedure to, but we can keep this on as a member item. I just wanted it to bring to you guys' attention, we do need to deal with this.
I haven't seen the email, so.
I did not either, that's all.
Oh, it was in May. I can have, can we have it?
Danielle's?
Danielle sent it. But like.
Send it. I'll resend it. I'll get it.
Okay. That's great.
So are you looking for a committee?
Um, well, I just wanted you guys to make you aware. I think if we bring it back after we get the email and have the ability to review, we can look at it and set a committee to.
There may be a monologue there that you may favor.
Right.
With some minor tweaks, but I would take a look at it and then you could always develop a subcommittee of the board that will take it back to the full board.
All right.
And can we find out concerns from those who are going to enforce whatever policy it is and their concerns so we can address it as part of it? Again, I just think of being like in a corral. If you are beyond the bounds of whatever that is, then you're in violation. So I just want to make sure like the application would state that. But I would like whoever is going to be enforcing these to make sure the applicant signs off knowing if they're not compliant, then it will end up in revoking the license.
Would that be Board of Health and Police?
I don't know who the current enforcement agent is. We'll take a look at that.
Okay. Great. So moving on to number 12, we have no one for our second public comment period. In our packets, there are meeting minutes from June and the two meetings in July. Are there any corrections or adjustments?
I was not here in July, so I can't tell you if there were any adjustments. I just want to state that for the record.
So for, did you want to take them separately?
I just want it noted for the record, I wasn't here, so I'm not.
So are, if you've attended these meetings, are there any corrections or changes?
There was not on any of the ones I attended and I attended all of them.
So I will accept them as read. I think we, that just leaves a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion on a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We are adjourned.